We.
But it's like.
Like literally it's. You can just.
Could you go?
Can open the uh select board meeting December seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight? Okay, now we'll move on to the approval of the amendments of November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Why are the motions accepted?
Make your motion to accept the minutes.
We have a second?
I'll second.
So discussion, the only thing I saw was in the last page. Um, the town hall be a sixty dollars, not sixty-five. So. Anything else? Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So caring. Comments from the community?
Do you want me to mention my comment about what you look at with?
Um, well, I think we'll bring it up in the highway discussion. Um, that's why. What's findings? Well, no, like you know, I I had attended a TAP meeting today, just so like you know that the scheduled opening of the rail trail is February first, two thousand twenty-three, walking, of course, walking, bridging hard right to the holdups. I guess a a bridge in Harvard and there's been a slide somewhere. And there's gonna be official opening um late spring or summer twenty-three. On the road trail, they're talking more having the, not in a town, but along the whole thing um. People with electric bikes or something going through towns and stuff, they don't know. But just still letting you know, um, they're also working on plans for signage. Uh, this is B Trans is working on plans for signage for the trail and off the trail. And when they get it all together, if you want, we can request free signage. They'll install it, but the town would have to maintain it. Um, it would be to direct people to um businesses or something like that, or water or bathrooms off the trail.
Did they mention anything about mile markers?
Part of our standpoint would be very helpful if they have mile markers, but if they have a bicycle accident, they have some machine accident. These don't like, I'm on on a cell phone, there's a mile marker that tells us, okay, there. It's like you do with the E nine one. We rather never felt that they even rode across, maybe across fifteen, how many times, probably rode how many times, you know?
Right.
This isn't married in another town, I mean, so.
Oh, you're arguing, I'm just bringing it to their attention.
If if being grabbed their attention, other towns, such involvement, especially as asking part of other part, other partners that are involved in other towns, also bring this to their attention that it would be extremely, extremely helpful down there, they are designing to put in mile markers.
So I think that, this is my personal impression, they're a little behind the eightfold with a lot of the things they're doing, the trail's gonna be open and they still have to set up policies and signage and whatever, um, so the Jackie Casino is in charge of, basically in charge of this for the state, she used to live in Woking, so she's familiar with it. But what they're setting up is um regional committees and state committees where people can come together, make suggestions and so forth, and then they'll direct you to the state committees, so forth, to implement things they wanna see and so forth, but um, I'd be happy to pass that along, um. Is a suggestion? Um, we got an email from Paul McGrath, um, have you responded at all to that?
Yeah, because the thing that we, how we discussed with them was potentially putting out yield signs on Gulf Road Bridge as opposed to a stop sign. Um, and I just wanted to put that before the board and see if that makes sense. Um, so the the request was to put stop signs on the Gulf Road Bridge, very much like we have on the School Street Bridge, but I think on Gulf Road, a yield sign is uh appropriate. Um, does he have a good view from either side on that bridge?
Yeah, uh. Either or, I guess, yield sign.
So I think the whole idea is not making, not that you can't see, is he wants people to slow down. Then have to, then you want, you know, to kind of a way of getting the speed down.
Yeah. Well, that case probably stops, sorry.
I think that's what his concern was.
Okay.
Speed, um.
Right, right.
So, you know, please, I mean, you still have this law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or start with, even when someone's coming.
Uh, I mean, yeah, my my fear is that it might be a a sign that will be viewed um from the driver's perspective, if they see a clear bridge, they're gonna go over it and they'll probably run the stop sign. And I don't know that we want to be putting in calls to the sheriff about people running the stop. I think a yield sign is more appropriate.
My opinion, I'll go ahead.
Well, with a yield sign, I'd hate to meet gravel trucking, they say they got the right of way and blow me over. That's the problem with a yield sign. Yield sign says, hey, so what, I can go.
Well, yield coming, coming traffic.
So, yeah, it comes down to whose traffic.
Right, right, which end, would we, which end would yield?
So gravel wants to run you over because they're a big break, you're done. And I know with you guys, I'm gonna stop, you're plowing, I don't wanna.
Right.
I don't put the yield sign on the North Woking side, because you're coming off a store, you have a pull over, you yield, the other people don't really have a pull over.
Both sides should probably be the same, because if one has a stop, you know, has a yield, that would be to do.
Well, my suggestion was to call Better Back Roads and make the guy come up here and tell us what we need with Paul. So that he, you know, he he's, he wants us to do this and that, but we're guessing.
Yeah, so the second part of his request was the speed study. And that is arranged with LCP's agreement. So it's no cost to the town that they run a study there on speed, um, and we might want to also is Rob an appropriate person to ask about the stop versus yield?
No.
Exactly.
You need someone from B Trans.
Yeah, B Trans has a traffic coordinator, it's anything.
Yeah. I mean, follow where to the source of of what we need and invite Paul to go too, so that, you know, he can hear what what should be there.
Okay.
That's.
If I can get, I'm happy, well, who's listening this, right?
No.
I don't know, but I can get ahold of the show.
Okay.
Really?
Uh, really?
The show's starting to get older.
Yeah. If you email us, you can clear.
Yeah. I had that contact too when we were doing the, I spoke to the former Better Back Road to municipal bureau, I forget his name.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Well, of course, one of them.
I have two um highway driveway permits that need approval, Dylan signed off once for Shane Brown at nine sixty-nine crossroad, he didn't put a sketch, is this on his second road, his second driveway? He can sort of start. So where is it exactly? I mean, I have, that's right, yeah.
Uh, it's the only field on the ground.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's in the field?
Yeah.
Which crossroad?
Between downtown Eastville.
There's a.
No, there's.
I put aside the credit center.
Longtown, yeah. It connects Eastville.
Yeah.
It's in the middle.
Yeah.
Or towards Eastville, it's on the line.
Right near Mrs. Mike Houston.
Yeah.
It's past, it's past, yeah.
Yeah.
The one.
Past Eastman's.
Yeah.
Eastman's, past the Lewis O'Briens, and then it's empty.
Sure. There's just a vacant field there for a long time until Shane put a driveway in there, I've been here before.
Okay. So can we approve the, I have one again, um, one on three Brook Road. Now, he put in a new, um, we put in a new driveway.
We put in the temporary, right?
Was it further down or in the same place?
Same place, so we put in the temporary driveway for when they did the
Right.
the project. And then we moved it, that was the deal. And uh, he contacted me the other day that he had talked to Denotti about putting it back and parking a big truck. So as far as I'm concerned, it's.
Someone's not allowed to sign this, so I would watch Joe Denotti sign this before I sign it too, it's on Charles Land.
I would do the sign in.
I don't want to sign it, it's hard to know, you know, who knows, I don't know who's signing it.
Uh, the wife, um, Paulman's wife wrote it in, so I don't know.
I thought it said on the.
Well, it says, but I repeat, I, you know what signature that is?
Not the signature, but on the front doesn't it say?
It says, but I want a signature, you know, permission to I don't wanna prove the driveway on someone else's lawn if he wasn't giving.
We can call Joe.
Okay. So I'm gonna hold on on that one.
We're not, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, did you, um, did, so can you take that cover out?
Yeah.
Okay, is that always expensive?
Yeah. Yeah.
Police story, you know, you get?
No, I used it up the road.
Yeah. All right, if I can, I'll link it to accept uh this driveway permit for Shane Brown. Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor, say yes. Aye. Opposed? So caring. That's the. What else do we have, this is the annual report schedule for the town report, I think we've got for coffee. Um.
Which one are you doing?
Yeah, so we should, you see as well, are you moving on, are you gonna do it?
Right.
Just another final notice of the local coming. Boardhouse budget is on January ninth. At seven P M at the boardhouse. If anyone wants to go. It looks like it's um increased by armed portion, it looks like an increase of one thousand one hundred thirty dollars. They're increasing their overall budget of forty-five thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Isn't it based on population?
It is, but our population went down.
I know, it's why. It's be their budget.
How do we leave this with current, if anyone wants to look at it? We received a notice of homeowners, uh from Damien Webb, who live, has that, was that one woman in School Street? Who was up for tax sale. His ton was up. Um, this is basically, he's saying that he's applying for the Vermont homeowner Assistant B program for delinquent property tax assistance. Um.
So now we just have to wait and see what they do.
We don't get to tell him he doesn't live there?
No, we get no impact. They do it based on the information he supplies from.
I think it's worth it, I'm, I really do.
Uh, the only thing that you see asked me is the balance, that's it, and that's all, and it's like, you know, never talked to anybody.
My uh, um, when Preston applied for this, I would say oh, through the path of that. Um, and the problem, my concern here is he doesn't live there, he's never lived there, it's a vacant property. And he's looking for Vermont tax relief. Because one of the requirements is that your credit's your primary residence. Previously, he applied for religious uh exemption.
Yep.
And considered him to be a, what was it, a?
Parsonage.
A parsonage. And it's just, you know, it's a deterioration, it's rundown, it's, it's a nice one.
Okay, uh, moving on, we'll start our budget here, so I might start in the first. You're up.
So, we've had some increases this year. Unfortunately. Yeah. Um. Kind of inevitable, I think, with much of everything gone out. For first increases. He's no, he's no while, that increased by five thousand.
Did we get a copy?
Uh, the budget?
Yeah.
Did you go on there?
Oh, is it the same as this?
Yeah.
All right, well, sorry.
Yes. Uh. Yeah, that's actually, it's the other one.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, so uh, two papers stapled, and then there's another one. You put this one up. The what we, the two sets of papers are, um the the one that is vertical is up to date, near to date as of today. The one that's horizontal, um, is uh the proposed budget numbers. So we should go with the horizontal one near the proposed.
Okay. Um, tires, increase in tires of uh five hundred dollar. Fluoride, that increases to probably five thousand, the price of fluoride, um. Believe, earlier in the summer, it was around ninety cents, ninety something cents a gallon. And last month, it was over a dollar, a dollar and cent or something like that, so that's gone up. Apparently for the first time in a long time. So so we're going up that one up. Uh, last year, I think for a seventy-six dollar done, the new contract's ninety-one dollar.
Yeah, this day is mostly shopping.
Yeah. So it's a significant increase here. Paying, we increased that five thousand dollars.
So the question here.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we have, um, we have this paving grant
Yeah.
in the North Woking Road. And our share, I figured it was gonna be thirty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah.
I wondered what we would do with twenty thousand.
The remaining?
Yeah.
Uh, I would say use it to do some shim on some spots, town mail needs it. Needs more, that still needs full pay job replay, really. And the North Walker Room, that'll need more too.
The bottom section.
Yeah. Uh, culverts, that's also five thousand dollar increase, the price of those is increased a lot the past couple of years. That's.
My account.
It's only double over it. Yeah, so when I, when I first started here, an eighteen inch culvert, eighteen inch black culvert was ten dollars fifteen cents plus. And now it's over twenty-five dollars, but for the same culvert, just in three years.
Are you making them better?
Awesome.
It's the same ones you're reading, we usually.
I just wanted to get that.
No, I don't think so, and the same thing, they were just more expensive. Um, health insurance, increase there. Difference this year, eight thousand, seven, eight thousand dollars.
Well, that's also because one person, it was two people, and now it's family, so there's an increase because of
Yeah.
that.
Roadside mowing, bumped that from six to ten, last year we had Bill doing mowing for us, and he turned this nine thousand. Again, it'll be any cheaper this year. And guardrails, they increased that from five thousand to fifteen. We've got a few locations that need to be replaced, repaired, whatever, and I got the Latvia early this spring. And uh, that ended up fumbling through, I couldn't get back ahold of anybody. But they ended up giving me a quote and to fix the couple of locations that I showed them, uh, I believe it's about seventeen thousand.
So I did a couple of questions, Dylan, um, after you and I went over this and then um, I had some complaints for you, uh, to try to understand some of the posting. Um, and uh I think the increases you're talking about are, those, they're inflationary increases. Yeah, um, so compensation increased uh by contract. The uh uh, the materials are increasing by inflation, and that probably will not go down again. Um, and uh, there are, and of course, insurance, you know, during COVID, there was zero increase. And and we're paying for it now, there's a eleven percent increase. Uh, plus you guys are getting married and giving babies and stuff like that, you know, it's okay, it's no biggie. Um, what I did was curious about um bridge repair.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, we talked about looking at the state reports for bridge repair
Yeah.
and see if this is an area that we can cut back on.
Yeah.
if possible, um. Because I don't know of any critical areas right now.
No, I don't either, the 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 last reports that I looked at, I can't remember if it was I think it was last year's report, there was nothing critical, but there, it was mostly cosmetic stuff, but I think the biggest concern was the um, the Gulf Road Bridge. And that was the needed facial repairs.
Right.
Which is not structural.
Right.
Not a safety, not a safety structural problem. And the way it sounds, they're gonna be, the state wants to do a project.
And that would be a million dollars or something, there'll have to be some new book of money that comes comes through for that.
Yeah.
Because we have to deal with town now first.
Yeah.
So I would wait for a new bridge there for a while.
Okay.
Probably not while I'm still select board.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, and there's this category, uh, called
Brown, Sam's line, in which there's been nothing posted to it, there's a five thousand dollar budget.
And the explanation I got on that is, this is materials that you have in storage.
Okay.
Already?
The stockpile.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, that makes sense, like I said, like I said the other day, this has been on the budgets since I started, and I never totally understood it. I've always used it for uh for areas, like if we need one load of gravel to do a culvert or something like that, that's where you use it from.
It should come out of there in a book, it's not just stockpiles, it's all sand and gravel that's not used for a construction project.
Yeah.
But we haven't used any?
I I thought I had, I thought I charged to it, but.
Last year you did, just not this year, since July.
Well, I wondered what class three construction other was.
Um, it's uh something we have to ask Dylan. We have a question on Dylan. I don't know why she put it under others, she probably doesn't know what room.
Yeah, so there's class three construction, and then it's broken out into the road segments. Eastville, Marshall, Nysro, Gulf Road. And then there is a budget number for forty-one thousand.
That's the whole thing. And then Dylan breaks it out per road, so if we, um, uh, he's working on a segment, then we know what road it is. And but overall, we can't put a a budget number in each of those roads, and we have it all together at the bottom.
So in 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 this budget, it's forty-one thousand, just spend on class three construction, great. They um broke it out, but he only spent thirteen thousand two hundred fifty-three.
Is so.
So far.
Yes. One name we found. One name we found on Town and Marsh Road, we got reimbursed the grant. So we would just be our portion of that. It would come out of that. I did have a question before you, um. So I signed a grant agreement or a grant in September of twenty two. Um. Um our match is five thousand, five hundred. The total award was twenty two thousand. Is that the Marsh Road?
No, that's the new one.
The new one. All right. So.
Next year.
Okay. I just wanted that clear in my head and make sure we did it.
Yeah, that's a new one for you.
Marsh one just got sent in.
Okay, so then um wherever you do that, then it'll. That portion of our match will come out of your class three.
Yeah.
The month is not, it's in salary and it's also in equipment is fine. So. Basically hit the, the money.
Right.
Um. And my, my, my last piece of proposal is um. The equipment fund and I might ask Belinda to help me with this. Uh I added quite a bit to it because of loader and the truck coming out. Um but there actually is a balance from this year. And uh so I'm kind of looking for the appropriate number in there. Yeah, last year was seventy seven thousand. That will cover the excavator and it will cover the. Backhoe. Um and then we don't have a payment on the loader until the end of the.
So, okay, so we pay for uh September, we pay for in the excavator. So that was already we paid for this year. We do have one more payment that we will be making for the grader, which will be in February. And right now, based on uh what we have in the account. And how much the seventy seven thousand we're gonna be moving over after we pay that greater, we'll have ninety six thousand, four hundred dollars. Going forward into the new fiscal budget that we're talking about tonight. And but each of the payments, as we figured out with these four different. Pieces of equipment is about between a hundred and twelve thousand and five hundred to a hundred and thirteen. Based on, you know, the interest and stuff. But so you have ninety six thousand, four hundred. Going into this budget where you're going to get hit with all this payment of a hundred and twelve five. So if you look at it this way, you could or not have a too big, too big of an increase for the voters. Maybe go up to a hundred thousand. For the first. Year or maybe less. Fifteen thousand at this point reason is one cent. On the tax. So that's just something to think about.
So we're gonna have ninety six thousand left over on June thirty. And we're gonna owe for the fiscal year um twenty two, twenty three. Seventies, how much? A hundred and twelve?
Hundred and twelve for twenty three, twenty four, yeah.
But if we just left it at seventy seven and borrowed some of that reserve. Cause aren't there some peak years? Um where it's gonna really be high and then it's gonna fall off. Didn't you do a little spreadsheet?
If we, uh, yeah, so twenty five, twenty six will be a peak year.
Or maybe just raise it to maybe eighty five. I'm not really, well, this budget's gone up so much. You know, I don't wanna. If you don't need to. I don't know.
Yeah.
So my question Dylan is. What is the life expectancy of the older quater?
Uh my truck, it's got plenty of waste left in it. You always try planning on replacing this company year anyways.
Well, we can replace it order, yeah, but it would come in on the. Twenty three, twenty four.
And your truck payment of the one we just got is thirty nine thousand here. So if you did go up a hundred thousand, it will absorb some of that. But I don't know when it's going to hit. It probably won't hit until twenty four, twenty five. It's up to you.
Personally, I can't make a decision too many, to look at it. I need to put it um and look at it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Uh yeah, so that, so that uh you always try. Um. With this budget, it's gonna put a little strain on. And we, the advantage of leasing is that you're a year in the rear. So. Uh. And by that time, we will have. The excavator. Pay.
Right.
So that, that's what Lynn was talking about.
Yeah, that whole, so that whole.
Yeah, yeah. It kind of. The peaks are longer term plan of. You know, when the, when the, when the warranty's up and the lease is up, just get another one. Because of this increase and because of the inflationary increase. We're probably gonna have to hang on to it for a little bit. So we're gonna have to take care of it.
Yeah.
But there is enough force of money within your capital funds. So you're not dire. And this is what I'm trying to say is you're not gonna go dead either. But if you did have to do the short term, just saying.
Other piece that um. Dylan and I talked about was one of the objectives of the leasing program is to get a handle on repairs. Um because the repairs are all handled by warranty and that paid off, they coming home ready. Several cases, um but we only reduced it by five percent. Uh because we're fearful of. You always start becoming cancerous.
For years.
Yeah, it's a fifteen, not a fifteen.
Seven years.
If we're gonna handle it for a while longer, I think, I think it's okay. It's, it's not a bad truck. But we should probably, you know, take some money and have somebody really go through it. Fix everything that might go wrong with it. So it's not down, it's not spreading.
So just another consideration is.
Mm-hmm.
This is the tough budget out of it.
I don't know. If it's, I'm open to suggestions, but very, very.
The only thing I can see so far is the, is the bridge uh repairs. Um and maybe some of these materials that we're, we budgeted for. We're not using against it. And maybe a further reduction in. The, the repairs.
I would say that the townspeople, this is. Where they like to spend their money because they want their roads good. That was the most important, I think.
It's where they get the service, right?
The. I'm a little reluctant to drop the parts repairs budget too much just because of. Say we didn't have to do any major repairs at all, any of the trucks, just the cost of cutting edges for the plows, cut edges for the grader. Those are wildly expensive.
Good point.
Just throwing it out there. And I'm sure that they're gonna get into these too easy.
So what's the average year for tires on a new truck that we know?
A couple of years, a couple of years. For winter, yeah, maybe more than that, maybe two or three years probably. We take them off, we take the good tires off, spraying and run. Tires that are half or out in summer time. Yeah, when your tires lost. Been three years.
Dylan had a question for you. I'm Dylan. Had a question for Dylan.
Yeah, um so on Richard Walker Road, Elmore uh plow truck got stuck.
I heard it.
Yeah. So I just had a casual conversation with Michelle over there.
Yeah.
And um so there's a utility work going on on the road.
Okay.
I didn't know if they had, they took with you, they're burying utilities in the road.
Really?
Yeah.
No, I haven't heard anything about that.
So uh there's at least one spot where they trench across the road. And um what happened with this, with the Elmore truck? Cause the plow on the right side.
Yeah.
The right side got um towards the side of the road, but it was where they ditched. They were actually in the road.
Yeah.
It wasn't up the right way. It's in that section where there's some of the dead maple trees are still there.
Yeah.
So a little bit on the uh Morris, Morrisville side of where we cleared.
Yeah.
And um. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Is it, is it real fast bar? Is there already a slot?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a huge pond now.
Joey's headed out early tomorrow morning to degrade it and try to smooth out some of these rough roads. And I think he was, he's, he mentioned that he was gonna go over there and try to fix it where the plow truck is stuck.
Yeah, he might have a hard time getting, well, it might be a little bit spoiled out there. It's, it's out in there. So.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, he'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Can you see who's doing that? Because they need to get a permit.
Yeah.
Permission.
I, I don't. But they did, they started on Walnut Lane, up the Walnut Lane, and now they're working out on looking.
Well, Eric and Rob, brotherly, they need, we need to have the sign easement from them. They're not allowed to do that.
Yeah, Walnut Lane is private road, but.
We rather, yeah, we haven't known this till right now.
Yeah, well, they've all those some uh cableings staged at the intersection of Jada Road and which you won't get right now.
Yeah.
And they have, I don't know if it's the same group is staging a bunch of stuff in the Elmore Church parking lot.
I saw that.
But I don't know that it's the same group, but uh. Uh but they have a little mini digger out there on Walnut Lane.
Yeah, I'll have a look into that to figure out who it is.
It's contagious to do what they're supposed to. I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
So I got a call from Randy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, on Walnut Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, he said Comcast was coming down Israel, Walnut Road private. But with, without permission, they were trenching.
Yeah, so we need to call them and stop. They need to present a, a case and.
Yeah, we, yeah, we at least need to know where these lines are going to, you know? We'll hit them. Yeah.
It's not that we don't want them to do it, it's just that we need control. On our property.
Yeah.
Yeah, Michelle's complaint was that they are burying cable. They need to be at the farthest limit of the right of way. And he didn't think that they weren't even near that.
Yeah.
And that's how the truck got stuck.
Yeah. Yeah.
You gotta go.
So I just wondered what last thing Dylan, I like go um. If uh your plans for working on Flatiron Road for when you cut this bridge. For.
Um.
Thinking that, you know, you did it in set segments or something that it wouldn't be as costly.
Yeah, so the biggest concern was this visit site distance, right? Spilled it.
Last two, he's right there. I think that's, you know.
What were we saying?
This little flatbacking road. When we do this bridge, we'll use that for the detour.
Yeah, we do not sit behind it, it's a sharp spot.
Yeah. So and the geographic, there's not a lot that you can do about straightening it out. It's a river on one side and a ledge on the other. But tree cutting would open it up an awful lot. Um. And build it up with some gravel. Just for more traffic. How long would it take out?
A year?
No, they said three months. No, three months. Yeah, I was like, a year, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, well, it's the data, yeah, they, they said three months and they were planning it so that uh. Hopefully it wouldn't be like during flood season, be in the summer. Cause if they have to go in the river, they can only go in like in July. It's only a certain timeframe they can go in the river.
The Fisher's part of it, so.
Well, I think the river's low too or.
Just don't let Saint Aron get to you. He took Southern Monks in Woodbury, you know? Yeah.
I can't believe they did all those bridges up here there in the same year. I'm surprised.
No, they did one by the gears, then they did the others three all at once.
Yeah.
One took seven months.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dylan? Thank you.
Thank you guys. Have a good evening, everybody. I mean. Um so we're able to pay off our air package. And that's why you don't see it anymore. Um we rolled that eight thousand into the recruitment and retention for the station. That's the, where the increase for the station came from. Um with some of our help, perhaps we work two, three jobs. Pretty much uh becoming more and more a thing. And uh the tanker loan, we paid that off and. Our engine three, engine two is gonna be, it's getting older. And needing some work, so that's where the vehicle replacement fund came from. So we can start saving up for a down payment. On a new tourist truck.
That's not the one that accounted.
No. Well, let's see. Our insurance. Um that went from seventy five hundred to eight thousand, eight hundred. Um. Equipment expense and SCBA maintenance went from two thousand to three thousand, five hundred. And then our protective gear went from six thousand to nine thousand. And the truck maintenance, it went from eleven thousand, five hundred to fourteen thousand. That's the major ones. What's the total over last year?
I'm pretty sure. Good run, so it's now more than last year.
So it's six thousand, nine huh? Assume you said we'd be over.
And then uh last year, it was like it was the third year or three years of fucking. We don't, it'll be, we can do that anymore. Just put the volatility in things. We're all. We're just, if, if our budget doesn't add for next year, we're not going to. Yeah, but you know, we can't, we can't sit here tonight and say that for the next three years. As far as twenty two.
So are you down?
At nine, nine fifty.
So are you, you still putting the ten thousand when we quit the front?
It's seven, seven, five hundred.
And the second went up.
Yeah, it was the eight or. And we were, it's more, we're just getting paid for the calls and now we're doing meetings and trains.
So where did that go? Sixteen thousand.
But um what, but Lynn was asking. But, um, what, but when it was asking, we, we give you eight thousand for stipend, ten thousand for vehicle replacement, and then your appropriation. She was asking you, you're creating a new vehicle replacement fund. Where, where's the ten thousand we normally give you?
It's worth ten thousand more.
Awesome.
I, I also gave them the help too.
Oh, okay, so, see, this is how we, how we broke it down, so maybe that's how we paid you for years.
Yeah. And we only paid you the ten thousand plus a year, or what's?
Twice, five, five, yeah. And then the eight, we always leave a number like you did before, so. It's fine, it's still seventy-three oh fifty, but we just broke it out different. That's fine. It was fine. Okay, no problem.
So you're telling us that that ten thousand dollars equipment fund is really, um, seven hundred and fifteen?
No.
Seven, seven thousand five hundred, and it's included in your overall, um,
Yes.
budget amount.
Yeah. The barriers are always pretty. Like, you might have a new river, you don't have to repair it. You know, one pump goes down, like, that's expensive. There's always a crack change.
And how is the fire truck, I mean, in Elmore?
In Elmore, good. In Elmore, no, not, not on some.
No, I just wonder how many one rivers you thought of.
Well, we haven't dated off, yeah.
Well, I know.
No, nowhere is it. I didn't do it, it's getting pretty good.
Then when you have a computer day with anyone?
No, I don't have that here.
That's okay, okay.
And we had a huge body of work, and now we're ending it.
Fire trucks later. Do you hear wings burning? Fire trucks wanna get one half of the town for us?
Absolutely. Yeah, pretty great. They came like that on the damn.
So you're not saying it's years, you're gonna compensate me for it again?
Yeah, it's hard, it's, okay. That was one of the massive things. Low mileage. Yeah, that would be very. I, I think, I thought in this, I'm Mercedes. That's basically, I was getting tabled, cause we don't want to do a big flow all at once.
But you have quite good in your equipment fund to put on that?
We, uh, we don't, this is a, this is a good part.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? Not, thank you. Go on, go, you're up.
No, I think, uh, the retirement, like the house, it ends real good. Uh, quite good.
Oh, that's one we talked about, that Damien.
Right, right, I think it's.
Oh, you, you can do that?
Yes.
My, my, so.
I do, you know, like, really, 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 I'm kind of. Uh, I got an idea, but I think.
So y'all should have fun with your project. Um, pretty much, I've planned down a narrative of it. Um, I went with three percent because that's what I assume, uh, could be more, could be less, I don't know. But, um, and then, of course, the insurance, um, which we talked about, the eleven percent, uh, this didn't quite eleven percent because of what was put in the personnel policy, which is we pay up to twenty-five percent of the expenses, which is in the. And, um, postage, of course, you know, postage rates went up, so I'm anticipating a little bit of bump um, there. Pretty much everything is staying, um, the same. I went down in temporary help because, um, my assistant town clerk's budget is, is good. Um, and I don't think I'm going to need a whole lot this year, cause it's, um, next year, I should say, because it's a non-election year, and so, you know, there's still things to do, but not as much urgency. Um, the other thing is, uh, training. I'd like to increase that a little bit to do some more training. And the only thing that I have questions about, um, is the computer, the copier expense account. Uh, if you can see at the bottom, my town fusion costs a certain amount each year. That's the land records, um, software. There's the copy, copier lease and maintenance. That's based on a whole year of making copies and paying for the copier. And then the tax tables each year for our payroll cost us money that we have through QuickBooks. Um, we buy checks each year to print out, um, and update the software. Eventually, we're, our office eventual, office package is eventually not going to be, um, it, it needs to be updated and, um, eventually we'll have to update QuickBooks too. I don't know, I would figure in there based on some, um, prices I got. But I don't know if that should be in the IT department or if it should be in mine.
What do you mean exactly? Update software, what software? Like your word programs?
Yeah, 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 yeah. The off, the office, it's called Publisher, Word and Excel and, you know, the whole thing. And, um, I think once we buy it, we can also use it for, like, the listers could use, you know what I'm saying? You can get a certain number of them that can be used on computers or different computers.
We, we have both licenses for some of the content.
Yes.
Right.
Then using. Um, I was estimated, uh, an amount. It's a little low, what I found, but, you know, maybe we'd only do one program a year, you understand? So. But I don't know if it should be in the ID, IT department or if it should be in this, in my budget.
Well, historically, it was in your budget, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, my thought is that these, these IT expenses, every department has them in one form or another. And I think, I guess that's a discussion we should have
Mm-hmm.
with the board about, you know, should they all be consolidated in the IT?
So we discussed town fusion, uh, that's paid for rest, from restoration fees.
Right. So I haven't pressed the receipt part of it, another with the revenue. Once, you know what I'm saying? I have to show it in this budget, it's out of it, but then on the revenue side, I'll show that forty-two hundred in. You see what I'm saying? I just, I didn't know if you wanted the revenue part of it.
Well, the, the revenues aren't mixed in. We, we don't do it like departments where
Right.
present revenue and, so it's expenses, we just kind of.
Yeah.
You all the revenues together.
Right, we, we anticipated, uh, six thousand in, uh, restoration fees this year. Um, in the budget grade right now, so that would cover that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My opinion is everything but the checks would go into IT. I think checks are just like paper. They're, they're, they're not just one of the IT things. The other ones are, you know,
Yeah.
It's my opinion, I don't know if anyone else has anything.
It makes sense. You mean?
Okay, I, I didn't know. I just wanted to show last year what we did versus this year, and so you could see what, look at apples to apples. Um, we have upgraded our, uh, computers and everything, and we have all the hardware we needed, so we don't need anything.
So it's basically, we're just moving money, we're not, yeah.
Yeah.
And mostly the increase is, is in salaries. Which, um, all towns are all over the place, um, here in, you know, Cola, which is eight point seven. Um, other people are, are saying that, you know, their towns are proposing four percent or, you know, whatever. I don't know what the board's thought on that is. Uh, I just went with what was left.
Yeah, we haven't even had an opportunity to discuss it.
Yeah. So I think most departments went with the three percent for lush.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions? Pretty boring. I was like, you know, there's not much change here. If, the only thing, um, I just wanted to ask, and I have no problem with this, um, uh, um, paper, paper has really gone up. And, you know, Edie and I have found that, you know, we, we try to scan a lot of things and we try not to print a lot of emails and stuff. We find ourselves using a lot of paper because the paper trail is what we're so used to and what everybody wants, basically. You, you know what I'm saying? It's, um, I don't know if we're ever gonna get, you know, be able to go digital or whatever, you know what I'm saying? And we're not running out of room for halls or anything. I'm running out of room in my storage room, but that's because I have a lot of boxes and we're gonna have to do some more, uh, shredding, but I just don't know, um, what the future, you know, is gonna be like.
Well, even though in the Secretary of State likes a paper copy, so if this one, I think, um, you know, it's really quite hard to go through two years of emails to find what you're looking for.
Yeah, and.
It's easier to pull out your file.
Yeah, my program after a year eliminates it.
Yeah.
Unless I save it in archiver.
Well, I don't know, uh, with public records requests, whether that's allowable. It should at least be on my cloud.
Yeah.
I've thought about maybe, one of the things I looked into is buying bulk. In other words, not buying as I need it, but buying as.
Always to know.
But then I don't really have any place to store it.
Okay. Project manager's report.
Yep, I think one last one. The, and that is the force committee.
Yeah.
Um, force committee has, has not had a budget in the past, relatively independent. Um, actually. Um, and so they are looking for between five hundred and a thousand dollars uh, to support their efforts. The, their duty mailing, um, Maria is involved in, uh, some, uh, web, um, design that she's looking for, not very expensive, but it, uh, you know, there, there will be a cost associated with it. So anyway, they're looking at the bill between five hundred and a thousand dollars.
So that's just that question, the, the force haven't owned website, or would it be on the town's website?
Town website.
Town website.
Okay, so, um, the project manager's report, uh, cause you probably all know, uh, the plow truck has arrived. Um, and the old one is gone. Which is, yeah. It took, took quite a while. Uh, when the transfer station, um, helps, he has proved to be enormously popular and is overflowing at all times. Um, there was a bit of a mix-up with, um, their pickup. Uh, but I believe that's been resolved. But even, even so, they may need to bump up the pickup even more. Um, so we're gonna, Michelle is gonna be talking to them about that. Um, they're, they're very responsive. It's been a excellent program and it's heavily, heavily used. Really surprised how many it's used. People have been storing it closed for years.
Well, I've been telling everyone I know. I'm pointing to my father.
Uh, but the hybrid system, um, uh, Logan is, uh, uh, going to be working with Nathan, see if we can wrap this up and get the microphones up in the ceilings. And, um, uh, at the same time, um, there are some paint swatches up on the wall. Um, so there is a plan to paint this room. It hasn't been painted since.
Two thousand seven.
Yeah. Um, and, uh, so that means everything's gonna have to come down at one point. Uh, so that he can complete that, that painting. Um, but I think we still, we're, you know, still need to get to the point where this is a turnkey system. Um, I was not even, I was not aware that the power on that thing was behind it.
We, we turned to, we thought just look at the power dot.
Yeah.
It's not a particularly heavy draw.
Might be a great idea. Uh, but I think getting that, getting all the wiring done and getting that infrastructure set and done, um, is something we would need, so. So I think working with Nathan is gonna be very helpful. Um, ground field testing, this is the parking lot, um, where we, I mainly have as a huge discussion whether one, for purchase of that in front of the voters, um, come March. But before, before that, um, hope to have results on ground field. I think that, um, uh, now, the LCPC is now running the, the ground field projects, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, hopefully that is gonna be moving along. The stone screener, there was a lot of discussion about the stone screener and a, uh, like, partial brand, which, uh, uh, we talked to Rob, uh, more about headline. Um, it just does not appear to be worth it. Uh, the, the town's contribution, um, is gonna be significant. And looking at our equipment budget, and, you know, the stone screener is nice, but I don't think it's an absolute necessity. And, um, uh, as, as Rod mentioned, you, you have to buy it first and then put in for the, uh, the, the, the funding, um, and it just doesn't, in my mind, it doesn't appear to be worth it.
How much is it? I mean, all grants we have to prepay it. That's not the problem. It's one of our share.
Yes, I agree with you.
Yeah, well, the.
And how much do you have to put in?
Probably ten.
Uh, we have to pay ten thousand?
Yeah.
And how much are they paying?
Five.
Oh.
It's upside down.
Was there anything else on the list that he was interested in?
Um, the stone screener was the only thing that I was aware of.
What about the bulk shit?
No, I haven't, all of ours, I saw it today.
I haven't.
There's, there's a whole list of names.
I guess I didn't have that list or seen it, or Rob.
I'll get it to you.
Well, there's always things that I just.
That's okay.
I know somebody hears about it, somebody thinks about it. Um, town report, um, we do now have scheduled for the town report. Um, sent out today a request for all that report. Just wants to put in the report by the nineteenth. Um, of course, we're working on the budget now. Um, Dev is working on the, uh, the notebook and trying to acquire photos. And we got some photos from you and hopefully they're gonna get some from Brian Burpee. And then we have, we have quite a number of others, so I think we were pretty well set. Given our experience over previous years, it's, it's, it's good to get way up in front of the district, which is possible. Um, appropriations we put in your packet are, are updated. It looks like it has got everybody to, uh, there's orangey. One last year, uh, has reapplied, um, for the same amount as previous. Uh, the only exception is that the Nichols Center and the Crasbury Samplings, um, have not. Um, and I think the Royal Housing partnership we just got today. Um, we do have one additional appropriation request from upcoming mental health for thirty-five hundred dollars. And that has got to go to petition because we don't have a previous history of that. Um, oddly, they sent the, they sent a petition along with their letter. And I didn't know, we, we put it out in front, um, the people designing that one signing. Like, I don't know if they were anticipating we were gonna go door to door. They should be doing it. It's, I'm gonna call the guy. But what's your expectation? Um, and the CIA, I think, um, Dev probably can give you a better picture of this. They have been trying to get photos of the lister system.
Yeah, the listers have been working with one of the technical people out of Littleton and, uh, it's, oh, and that's coming along and we'll see how it goes.
In motion.
Yeah, it's in motion. Uh, we give access to the technical person who shuts down every computer in the office. And, and we try to fix that, factor, shut computers and stuff. There's been a, a wee bit of problem communicating with a technical person, but we persevered. First time we were high friends.
Do you have a, is an anticipation of a delivery date?
I do. No, I, you know, I think for that, um, you know, Tal and I can talk to Franco. It's just that, you know, Franco is very good at, you know, communicating with us. It's just that, you know, there needs, he's not the technical person and so, um, we'll follow up with Franco as far as when, you know, we'll have something um, uh, you know, we can work with. It may not have all the photos on it, which seems to be the bugaboo right now, but that's something that we can work on later. That's, isn't something that should be holding us up.
They can't like come and scan or something, make it easier? Let's take them all the pictures to them.
I was thinking harder. I skipped rock, sorry. Yeah, yeah, it's, I don't know, it's, um, I don't know, we might, maybe we need a different technical person because we just have not been communicating well with this particular individual.
We'll follow up with Franco essentially. Um, COVID pay time off, we leave. So this was really disappointing. Uh, I, I would relate to this. And the, the VLCP has stated it does not apply to this.
Yeah.
No. That's real. I think it surprised VLCP too. Um, but that does not preclude a COVID policy update that I, I'm in the midst of completing. So that we are in plans or consistent with, uh, with the state on who qualifies for taking time off in COVID and under what circumstances. So, um, that should be going around, um, yet this week. Uh, as far as handyman update, uh, the ice rink is up. Um, which is pretty exciting. They had to move it three times. Um, the, the, the filters for the water side, we have, um, and they're in place. Uh, the interior painting can be one of the jobs of the winter and, um, Nathan has provided some slouches here. These are all the same color. Um, and, uh, you know, it's gonna be a lot of work on this room. He's, he tends to be a perfectionist, so it will take, it'll take a little time. Um, plowing, uh, he has been outstanding, um, with road crew. Um, he's training that plow. All we need is some snow. And and transfer station, um, I don't know if you've been up there recently, but he's done a rework of, uh, all of the, um, fencing in front of the roll-offs. So it looks a lot better.
And there's the stockade.
And it's a lot safer and the stockade has been fixed. So he's done, done some really nice work up there. Um, and I already did the CIA update, so that's it.
Thank you.
Because, have you been down to transfer station, glass? Or is that going to be from?
We're gonna
Glass.
Glass.
Oh, yes. Um, no, it's a good, I'm glad you reminded me that. Um, Michelle is working on that, um. Uh, so we're, I, we're gonna have another meeting with the, uh, leadership, uh, this month. So, yeah, thanks for reminding me that. I mean, it would really help our bottom line.
I think the big takeaway is that you kind of need someone there to to manage that. Maybe not totally, but at least someone there, um, you know, every time or open to organize that a little.
Yeah. A lot of places I've been at, they do it with the colored drums. So you have white for clear, green for green colored and brown for your brown. Hmm, interesting. It comes that way.
Break room? I mean, you throw man and they break?
Yes, they have a like an angle plate and you throw it in and it breaks something. And then you just remove that, put it to a new drum.
So where did you see this that we could go look at?
This was mostly Europe's where I saw it. And they did the same thing with the steel, that everything's in that. I think style is where we've been meeting. So it has, it's some setup there. But I think it would help us. The waste district was the one that kind of brought it to our attention.
But was the problem, the problem of finding a place to take it, was that the problem? I can't remember, maybe all the scholarships fly down.
Yeah, but they, they would have to shift it somewhere, I think Sudan said.
Yeah, I, we gotta get a roof for sure.
Yeah.
The next portion would be to see if there's any modern air systems that get stolen, playing field. It's feeling that we'd be interested in in the glass. Because they're rolling glass, they're making ornaments, no, it's aren't catches. Say then buying their glass.
Yeah, this one might have been.
No, no, I was hoping to give it to you.
You really do.
Yeah. It's coincidental. All right, um, any other questions, if heard, you will want. To the sheriff's budget, control budget.
So I, um, filled in a group, uh, giving a meeting with Doug from Johnson. Um, they had a board meeting in which Roger attended. And they voted high part against this stuff that eight percent was, was, was more than they could handle. Um, and they had a discussion with Roger about moving it to five percent um, over a three-year period, in other words, five, five and five. Um, and in discussion regarding that, I think, uh, at least Johnson and, and I, uh, agree that that, uh, is a situation that is where we are right now, because we did three, three and three and inflation was just that point, it was ironed. So you're gonna have a bubble. And to do five, five and five, uh, would simply push that same level down the road. Um, so the proposal that Doug wants to make, uh, to high part Antelope is that we propose five percent for one year, um, to Roger. And she feels that, uh, he will accept that. Um, the, the logic behind it is in the sheriff's operating budget, which looks to be very tight, um, it just, on, on the face of it, um, you could not there's just no room to knock it down. So eight percent was, was, looked to be hurting. Um, the reason that she believes that you can move it to five percent is because he can make it up in other contracts and he has. And that was not necessarily, uh, discussed during the, um, dependent, uh, the budget negotiations. Um, but it seems to me that is the case. It's, it would be much better for the tenants and, um, um, so what Doug is proposing to Wukka is asking, um, if Wukka is interested in uh, joining Johnson with proposing a five percent one-year increase. Um, and High Park is having their, uh, board reading tonight in ways they're having the same discussion. The, the only problem I foresee is like you were saying, you're still gonna have a big increase at some point in time. There's, you're not gonna get around it. Right, well, especially if you if you leave it at three. You're walking in for three years, you, you're correct, you're gonna have a, a bubble. Another one. Yeah. Yeah. Um, I think the argument that, that Johnson is making is because the sheriff is really, uh, has multiple sources of revenue. The, the towns are not the only source. And so they do contract a good percentage of their, uh, their activities that create revenues from the asset. And several, uh, sheriff operations within the, uh, uh, the state, including Rocket over time has moved those, they, they have participated in the budget. Um, and I think that that's really what we're all asking. Um, two, two percent raise over previous years. Um, he still has that eight percent, but he, we're asking that he cover that, that three percent.
Right, so what does he get? Five percent on any service contract, which I'm not sure where it goes. I don't think it all goes to Roger, but that's money that first, you know, his salary, but I think he could use some of that money in the
Yeah, in this budget.
And I think he has in the past.
Yes, yes he has.
Right.
And one other thing that Linda made a, a good, very good suggestion that, um, the other towns are very supportive of. And that is, um, building a fund so that when the sheriff goes to someplace like Eden on an emergency call, they build Eden for that call. And if they are in Eden on the call, they're not serving us. And so the request is that they take that money that they charge Eden for that call, put it into a fund.
To offset
Yeah.
budget increases, and I'm sure they were here this week up there in Eden.
They were there this week.
I'm sure they were called, it was very sad.
Those are the problems.
They asked me to serve the mayor.
Peter was killing me. So I don't know if we need to take a vote, I mean, I
Yeah, I think we need to take a vote because we need to, uh, you know, the other towns and Roger are asking really soon and they need to finalize their budget still, um.
So I did a question as a cashier, if we do this and he comes back and says, well, I overspent what you guys have given me, are we liable for the deficit?
We've never seen that happen before, have we? We just say our appropriations have never ever been built, um.
It's not like Mooreville School
Right.
where they say, well, gee, uh, we're short twenty thousand dollars, you're gonna pay it.
Okay, I just
Don't mind it, okay. So what's your thought of, of going with one year of five percent, not walking into a three-year? Um, just, uh, alleviating some of the pain? Okay, so can we have a motion? Um, I'll make the motion, we, um, we support a five percent increase in the sheriff's budget from one year, uh, in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget year.
I'll second that.
Is that clear enough? I mean,
Yeah.
Others in favor?
Okay.
Proposed, so carry. So you wanna let them know that that's what we we know. They are in our funds discussion. I asked for this to be thrown on, um, I was wondering how the board felt and trying to feel the, um, once we get our budget done, you know, in January, that maybe in the beginning of February, when things are a little quieter in between town meeting, that we maybe devote, um, an hour of our select board meeting to invite the public to come in, um, with any suggestions they'd like to see for ARPA funds, how we would spend it. Um, I know some people have been asking about that, not a lot. But I do feel like it's it's kind of their money too, um, for ultimately, we have to decide, but they can at least, um, give us, have a discussion with the public on that. I know we put it out there at a couple of our gatherings and so forth, and people have approached me about ideas, but we haven't gotten a lot of feedback. So what is your feeling on that?
No, yeah, I included in your packet a nuisance citizen article by Craftsbury. And Craftsbury went about this through, they formed a committee. And it sounds like it did some pretty good work, and and the result is pretty interesting as well, is that a lot of their uh, expenditures that they decided on are, um, public service activities. And they have actually well, they're at three hundred thousand, I think, that they committed so far. And so I think it took a lot of work to get that done. And so I think this is an excellent idea, and maybe the committee is the value.
It's the popular idea that places in tribe, they went immediately when they have the money and did a committee out of it.
They they are a part of committee, you know.
I'm first in the article that, um, the organizations they gave to were Craftsbury organizations.
Yes.
Um, there aren't too many organizations in WOCA. So it's good to say that our home is here. I think we've spent a a bit of money on on building, repairing things that we've just kept pushing off forever, um, that that needed upgrading, like um, Alan and I were talking earlier, before the meeting started, you know, these towns with their wastewater systems, and they just keep pushing off uh, repairing them to the point where like, well, failure, now they this huge bill. I think in the beginning, that was our mentality was to to do a lot of that work, um, that we kept pushing off so that we wouldn't have a big bill. On our building repairs and so forth in the future. But it'd be interesting to see what people might like, how they'd like to use their money. So that's what I was proposing, um, the February, the first of February meeting, um, maybe some advertising, um, front porch forum. But so just to let people know for a couple of weeks.
Good, good, yeah.
Good. Okay, this is just kind of an open time, um, to gather thoughts on, um, the warning and budget. We haven't really got into the to the meat of the budget, and that usually takes a couple meetings. But I wonder if anyone had thought about it, um, things to add, things to take off. And then we we need to add, you know, building name, we forgot that last year. It's not really
So, I do have a question on the morning, you know, um, last year, we did the appropriation individually, because we were voting on them by ballot. But this year, we are voting on them in the floor. Can we put them all in one article, because they can change it from the floor?
I think people like that better. But it's up to the board.
Is there a question again?
So the service organizations.
Or the appropriations.
They're usually, uh, one article.
Yeah.
And then they're list listed individually.
The amount.
But you don't vote for each.
You just vote on the whole group, right?
But you can amend them, you can amend, you can add, you can, because it's on the floor, you could say no to one, or you can amend the article. Or you vote for them all. You wanna vote them all as long, or do you wanna vote for them individually? That's the question.
The last year, we did it individually.
That's because it was on a ballot.
Will you be voting back to from the floor this time? Really can be by ballots, the officers.
In the past, it's always been one.
Yes.
I am.
I've been to see it individual. The reason is because someone will stand up and say, oh, I make the motion, I'm not voting. That gives you no chance really to modify or exclude of appropriation.
Yeah, I think, um, so and it was individually, but they they were all approved, right?
It's gonna be a long meeting, just like now, if we do it individually.
Usually is.
Thought we're gonna save all of that time from not voting on officers.
That's true.
But you're still gonna have the school officers.
For the school, you know.
For the appropriations? No, uh, you would have to have a vote.
It'd be a roll call rather than
You know, we used to have them individually like that, and, um, I was talking about that, I made that well, you know, that, not really know there. It was my favorite one. What they call it.
I'm doing it my way.
Yeah. The other question is, can we put the sheriff back in? The warning of the budget? But that was a question we we needed to come up with.
I think it says, I my personal feels that you should stay.
Well, that can be amended too. On the sound? Oh, no.
Either way.
I have a question for Kirk Billings. So you're concerned that somebody's gonna call the whole block to vote? Isn't there a way to prevent that?
No.
If you like, get a certain number of people saying you wanna complete the discussion, or that you get a certain number of people that say, all right, we want to vote. It's that way, right?
Well, you have to accept it from the floor first, and then you have can amend it.
Yeah, I just, I'm just my Robert's rules are not for sure, so, but now, I'll put that up there.
I've seen a time where someone who will say, let's accept it, and we just suck it, and then say, let's pass it.
We have to do that anyway, just like we do with the minutes here in the meeting, I have to get a motion to accept in a second, then you can have a discussion. But until then, nothing, you can't have a discussion before.
But isn't there a way that somebody can call it to vote before people have had all the discussion that they've wanted?
Well, that's a good moderator, who looks at, you know, looks at the, um, you know, audience and also, um, you know, kind of takes into account, gives people time, doesn't just let people jump up and
So this is my question. Joe's not the moderator. But he, you vote, we're voting to accept him as moderator, but we're doing it by ballot?
Yeah, but I think he would be, yeah, he would.
But then I won't know the result.
I think he will be that moderator until he's elected, his term will be up.
Okay. Just wondering how that works.
So everybody will, you know, they won't now, and so the polls close or whatever, they reelected or so forth, I think they need to follow through their office till then. Speaking of moderators, that's also one of the, one of the select boards really needs to is supposed to bring in the moderator before town meeting, and kind of go over, um, how the meeting's gonna go with them. So that might be a good opportunity to talk to him about that article and our expectations in terms of not, um, just having, you know, people jump up, giving people that opportunity. For that.
I think it'd be nice if the moderator would recognize somebody, rather than someone just standing up and yelling something.
Right.
Which has happened prior.
Right.
It's very it's not annoying, but it's
Yeah, I know. It kind of shuts
Shut your
shuts your voice out, because most people don't quite understand the process, they're taken back. Or they're timid. Um, so he needs to allow that space for everyone to have a voice. If people are in such a hurry to get over with it, that it's it's a one day of democracy, but being here.
You should also mention that I, you put in your packet, um, the what I would like to post tomorrow on front porch forum is the Australian vote for the the election. I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but the idea is to, um, just to start making the public aware.
They have to, you know, that people that want in office.
Yeah, yeah, right. And, yeah, not only are there people that want to petition for a position, but also people that want to request a ballot.
Yes.
So I've, uh, my question a couple of times, for Linda's run of Dover, Linda's year of Dover. Um, and so unless there's any objections, I'd like a place to tomorrow.
Why don't we have a Joe Ingram on to our last meeting in February before town meeting, um? Is there a meeting before town meeting? Um, in March?
No.
No, yeah. Um, that's probably the first one. So maybe we would have, um, Joe come to the last one in February, he can attend by Zoom.
That would be the fifteenth.
And maybe we could just talk to him, uh, I mean, it's up to us whether we want, um,
Actually, March first.
Is what I thought.
Yeah, March first is a Wednesday, and then we vote the following Tuesday.
That's because it's weird, it's because it's on a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, okay.
Right, March first, that is that we can.
I mean, I I've seen some meetings go nice and smooth. But then sometimes there's just people who are totally on there. And some people just are misinformed or not understanding what is asked or said.
It'll be interesting to see how the audience, the the taxpayers are meeting, because they haven't been together for two years, but maybe they might be joyous, but they may not.
Or they might have all kinds of if you come in with switchbreathers.
Yeah. All right. I guess that's it, but there's a lot of, I really would get out your town report and look at the budget, and if there are questions, or you need more information, either get in touch with Belinda to send it to you, or, um, somehow gather more information of so that when we have our meeting on the twenty-first, it isn't too too long.
Well, I'll get the proposed budgets from Kirk, and I'll put in what we know. And then, um, so each of you will get ahead of time what has been proposed by departments. And then what session is what you guys have to decide.
But as to this light board budget itself has to be and transferred.
And then we need to see what all adds up to, because we have not accepted any department's budgets, my money.
It's all a draft.
Yeah.
But everybody's had their chance to to give input. And now we have a draft, we'll try to put together a set sheets that make sense, easy to read. And, but I mean, if anything like the highway budget, these are already dead. You know, that it something's gonna happen there, because it's a hundred thousand dollars more than last year. Not gonna work.
Yeah, because you're talking
I think it's gonna be a trade. I think, I think there're gonna be a lot of towns like that, that they haven't seen the increase built in. That's gonna surprise a lot of towns. Unless they didn't, but a bunch of other towns didn't restart their money for it. In which there's pelling off a bunch of costs.
So do you think that, um, this increase is gonna continue, or we're kind of plateauing as we come out of, um, COVID? What I'm getting at is, um, just throwing it around about using some of the ARPA funds to offset the pain this year, but if it's something that's gonna keep continually be be increasing, then I wouldn't wanna waste the money, because I'm just putting it off, but I'm not quite sure.
You're gonna have
The cost of goods.
Magic one, but I mean, the the way that the the government is approaching it is um, it's through, you know, decreasing inflation through increasing interest rates. And
It's gonna make the economy, it's gonna create a lot of stuff that kill.
So then that has recession implications.
We're talking that now, it's a recession next year.
But I'm pretty guessing by Christmas, theoretically, you're gonna be down another dollar.
My biggest, my biggest problem is, and I don't know if you've heard, State of Vermont wants to build all electric vehicle.
I kind of read that somewhere.
And they passed it. So in
with, you know, why we want One thirty-five, you will not be able to register a gas vehicle in the State of Vermont.
I'm assuming by then they'll figure out, when they figure out the environmental cost and fee. As such, that it's an electric vehicle when it goes away, it's ten grand, you can drink all the batteries battery, it's just free. It's gonna drive all the people out.
You're going to do for your trucks.
This is so. I mean, there are really good trucks out there, but a smaller. Or more, yeah.
And now let's think about stock. What if they can only do a twenty mile stretch road and have to like recharge? And recharge is five hours.
But I can make sure you're golden twenty below and then all the batteries go down. Oh, you're running this. I can rob people.
But you're gonna, this is, thank you, I'll make a motion to you. Because we are still.
I had another question, but. There were a second, so I wanted to ask, just throw this up too. Remember that we gave a back. Or said we were not gonna apply for the rail trail. Planting commission was looking at the compost toilet. We had to pay twenty percent, it'd be like seventy-five thousand dollars. We couldn't find any town land even put it on. And we kind of came back with a proposal of maybe doing a portal lab instead. Because, so I would like you to have an answer for the next meeting. Do we rent a portal lab? For people coming off the rail trail? Is there either gonna use the town, always be in the town office in a library? Or do we rent a portal lab and put it out in back of the gazebo? Think about it, what you prefer. I'm sure the town employees wouldn't like strangers all coming in here all the time.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah. Okay, mostly for you, John.
Chuck it. Next second.
Second, yeah. Thank you.